Okay, Mayor, we are ready to go.
Okay, let's go ahead and call this work session to order. The time is 1:03 PM. We're going to open it up for visitor comments. Please keep it limited to five minutes. And you can raise your hand and Matt will see you if you'd like to make a comment. Hang on, please. Or mute yourself?
I'm not sure who that is.
Bert's iPhone. You're coming through loud and clear.
You can hear me?
So who do we have?
We have just just Kathy, I believe. Kathy, did you want to read your statements?
Well, let me go ahead and get to that part if we have no visitor comments. So we have an employee length of service award for Dan.
I think there were visitor comments.
Nobody has raised their hand or chatted, so.
Sue Mueller said, can you hear me? But now she's gone.
If you would like to do visitor comments, you need to raise your hand in the participants list or send myself a message that you would like to speak. Okay, I do have one person.
This, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Sue Mueller.
Okay, go ahead, Sue.
Hi, I wrote a note to the city council on
We lost you, we're losing you, Sue.
You might need to unmute yourself. She's probably talking and can't hear us.
I'm sorry.
There, there you go.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not very good with electronics here.
Okay. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, well Doug Martin asked me to to bring this up at the meeting that you were having today, the work session. It's a, it's a letter that I wrote to everybody about my concerns for Halloween Town. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and read the letter as he requested.
Sure.
So I put, "Hi to all, I have a huge concern about the safety and wellbeing of not only our city and citizens, but of others who are being encouraged to travel here for our annual Halloween event. In my opinion, the event should be canceled. I sent a note last week to John Walsh, but have not had a response from him, but rather a note from Tina Curry, assuring me that steps are being taken to assure low attendance and safety. I have to question the process for which a decision was made to hold this month-long event due to the following concerns. Our town is currently in a state of emergency due to COVID-19. Schools are making severe changes to the means of educating our children, at least through this fall. At this time, COVID cases are increasing in children. Governor Brown is considering travel restrictions. People are struggling financially. Controlling the number of people downtown at any time would be impossible. Would be difficult to assure compliance to safety regulations. Would be difficult to maintain adequate personal hygiene and city cleanliness. Advanced tickets may be purchased, but no refunds are allowed. We could continue the spirit of Halloween Town with the usual decorations, but please, as a strong community, let's show care and concern for everyone. We need to cancel the events and the focus on tourism for now to avoid furthering this current state of emergency." And then I signed it. I do know that we all need fun at times, especially now, but for the safety of our community, I really believe this is an event that could be put off for a year and made even better next year. As a Lion Clubs member, we, we have helped the Kiwanis with several events. We've enjoyed it. We've appreciated being able to fundraise for our sight and hearing needs in our community. But we really feel that this is a bad time to do it.
Okay. Thank you for your input and we'll probably be talking about this later. Either this work session or later this evening. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other visitor comments?
Kathy, did you have one that you wanted to read into the record?
It was just after the, the Dan Dieter is announced.
Yeah, so let's get on with that. Okay, employee length of service award to Dan Dieter. Five years with the city over there at the library, library assistant. He's a valued employee. Always a great attitude over there and it sounds like Kathy has a something that he wrote up, which is pretty awesome that he couldn't attend, but he still felt necessary to write, write something. So Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, Dan says, he thanks, he says, "Thanks to the city for all they are doing to keep things running smoothly during the pandemic. He likes working with the library and appreciates the city's support of all the library programs and services." And that's it.
All right, well, thank you, Dan. Thank you for all your service to our citizens. Okay, anybody else like to make a comment on that? I'm not seeing anybody.
Thank you, thank you to Dan because he does such a great job at the library. It's a huge diversity element that he brings there with his experience. And he's helped me and helped people I brought in the library so many times and always takes the extra time and the patience to help people find exactly what they want. He's not just a good employee. He really cares about the library patrons and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Speaking from the library board, a great detail man and keeps good records and keeps us in line from meeting to meeting and overall the projects, things that the public doesn't see. So yes, high five.
All right, big counter to pass. Okay, so let's get on with the Chamber of Commerce semi-annual report.
Hang on one second, I will unmute and ask the chamber members out of here. I will send you an invite to start your video. And I will also unmute you. You may have to unmute yourself on your end. And did I get everyone that was here? I got all the names I initially recognized, but let, please let me know if I forgot someone.
I think you did. Hi, everybody. This is Dan Rocha. I am the Chamber of Commerce Board Secretary and also joining me today from the chamber is Susanna Hensley, who is our Vice President, and Haley Iverston, who's a member at large, and also Dana Lathrop, who is our Office Administrator. And we've got a update prepared for you as requested by the city and also can take some questions at the end. But before I get started, was there any questions that anybody on the city council had for the Chamber of Commerce, just like and jot it down?
What's the feel of the COVID and response to business and how they're, how they're doing with it?
Yeah, that's a big question to answer here in just ten minutes, but I, I think that the general feel is speaking from kind of a marketing side because the chamber offers a lot of marketing benefits to its members. Advertising on our Facebook page through our emails and different things. And we're not getting a lot of response for the, we're putting out there, you know, asking people to use their member benefits of free advertising. I think a lot of business owners are really maybe in, in a really deep right now, trying to figure out how to keep their business sustainable and not having a lot of time to think about doing other things. So we're trying to be proactive with helping, helping members see the benefits that are out there to communicate what their business has going on. If there are rows of change, if they're just now reopening. But you know, speaking for myself as a small business owner, it's been an interesting time going from very slow to very busy and kind of back and forth. Yeah, I'm not too sure what's going to, going to happen in the future. I don't know if anybody else from the chamber wants to answer that question also. Okay.
I think, I do have it up. I think you answered it fairly well. There's probably a lot of fear involved, just the unknown. I couldn't imagine being in retail or like personal businesses like Harris Lawn or something like that. And in restaurants, just trying to roll with the changes and not knowing what's going to happen in a month from now.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the uncertainty is really hard. I've talked to a lot of, or a few business owners that are in the restaurant world and yeah, they're really uncertain as to what's going to happen. And then just the fact that their ability to stay open is also a partnership with the customers that come in too, right? So if you have clients and customers that come in and they don't want to follow the state rules and that can affect that restaurant or that bar's ability to stay open and that's that's a bit, that can be a bit scary.
Yep. All right, I'm gonna let you go ahead.
Sounds good. I do have an update. We have, we've been a bit quiet, but we've actually been very busy since March. We have a fairly new Board of Director, so I wanted to just go through the list of everybody that is currently on our board. And there's also an email that's going to go out this, while I'm talking to all of our members and everybody on our email list that has all of this information too. But we have, as I mentioned, Susanna is our Vice President, are currently our president's spot is open. Hope resigned in, I believe it was May. She took a job outside of the county and just wasn't able to to make the commitment that the president needs to make for the chamber. So Susanna has stepped in as our Vice President. I, as I mentioned, I'm filling the secretary role. We have Bob Bernard, who is still on as our treasurer. We have three new members, Alex Tardif, Gina Cisco, and then Haley Iverston, who's on this call. And we've been working really hard with our volunteer base and on our ambassadors group to keep the chamber running and divvying up all of the day-to-day, week-to-week type operations that need to happen to be able to support businesses. And we're feeling really good about this volunteer group that we have that we call Chamber Ambassadors that are, are running several different committees that I'll run through those in just a minute and meeting the needs or trying our best to meet the needs of the business community in South Columbia County. So as everybody knows, we did have to lay off Executive Director Chrissy Marcourt in March, and that was purely due to lack of funding. As COVID was just getting started and we were just weren't sure what the outcome was going to be with membership renewals and new members. And we just didn't have the funds to, to be able to continue to pay her salary and it was looking like it wasn't going to be possible to, for businesses to stay open for us to continue to work to try to bring on new businesses. So that decision was made by the board in March and executed in March. And I can tell you that Chrissy is still involved as a volunteer with the chamber and through subsequent conversations, we have, as a board, talked to her about if she would be interested in coming back as an executive director down the road, if the funds allow it. And she has stated at this time that she's not interested just due to her current workload managing remote learning for her three small children and then she's also has a home business too. So we did in July, Suzanne, is that correct? July, we were able to get a small PPP loan. And we are utilizing that money to hire a office assistant. And this is going to be a part-time position that Dana is currently filling in temporarily while we go through a a job candidate search. And the idea behind this is that we have somebody join us 20 hours a week to handle a lot of the paperwork and the answering emails and phone calls. And this gives us the ability to have the office open. Gives us a paid staff person so we can utilize our PPP loan with the intent of keeping this person on into 2021 as funds allow. And what we're trying to do through having an office assistant part-time as well as our committees is we're trying to lay out a better foundation for when we're able to hire an executive director. Those of you that worked with Chrissy and worked with Simon previously know that the executive director position previously that person had a lot of different hats that they had to wear and it was, it was really more than one person can, can get done in a manageable work week. So we're trying to set up a better foundation so that when we are able to bring on a new executive director, we have well-functioning committees that are handling a lot of the day-to-day and week-to-week activities that we have an office administrator in place that's handling a lot of the busy work and the, and the communication and that would, will allow our goal is that will allow a new executive director to come in and be very successful working with the community and meeting the needs of business owners and working with the board on long-term strategy. So the chamber office, not the building, but the office is open right now, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 11:00. We're there to assist the general public as well as small businesses, the large businesses, anybody who needs some support or needs to be pointed to resources. And the Inroads Community Center that is part of our office as well is also available for members and non-members to rent. It's one of the larger conference rooms available in the county for people to rent and that is available. And with very stringent cleaning procedures, we do need a 72, 72-hour notice for that. And anybody who wants to find out more about that can contact the office. As I mentioned, we are currently recruiting a part-time office administrator. There is, sorry, office assistant. There is a job description on the Chamber of Commerce website. One thing that we have done in the last couple of months is we implemented a code of conduct for all of our volunteer, including the board as well as all of our volunteer ambassadors. And we have everybody that is currently a chamber volunteer has signed that. And the goal around that was just to make sure that we were clear with what the expectations were as a chamber volunteer when working with the community. So we have committees. We put together six committees. We broke up the monthly responsibilities into committees. So we have a membership committee and I should point out that these were formed by the board in oh, let me think. These were formed by the board, I believe in May, and then we kicked them off in June and into July. So we have a membership committee that is working on reaching out to new members as well as renewing members and reviewing our current membership tiers and benefits. And they'll be doing that on an ongoing basis, just to make sure they're competitive and meeting the needs of the business community. We have a coffee and commerce committee. We've continued to have our bi-weekly coffee and commerce over Zoom. We're getting between 20 to 30 plus people attending that depending on on vacation schedules. It's definitely slowed down a little bit as we've got into later summer. We had some, we've had some really good engagement, especially early on when people were not going to work and everybody was home. It was a really good way for businesses to just kind of talk openly with each other about what some of their concerns were and a good connection point. So we're doing that now on the second and fourth Friday of the month. And that will continue virtually indefinitely at the moment and until we're able to safely do that in person. The Coffee and Commerce Committee then is working on administering the Coffee and Commerce event as well as finding members that want to host. We have a marketing committee that is working on our email newsletter, our social media advertising and posting as well as managing our website. We recently relaunched the website. Last week, we're currently working on rebuilding our membership database into that new website, which is both a increase in functionality for our members and a decrease in cost for the chamber. We have an education committee that is working on training events. This is something that was started back in the winter months before COVID. And we're picking it back up now and trying to take a curriculum that has been started working with WANA credit union and turning that into a virtual training event. We have an events committee that is managing our ribbon-cutting ceremonies. We're still doing those. We did one recently for Summers Financial as they opened a new office in Scappus. The events committee will also be looking at doing some other things in the future as well. And then we have a building use committee and that committee is focused on how do we best utilize the space that we have. And they're managing the rentals of the in-road community room. We have two office suites that will be available for lease starting in October, November. And this committee also has helped us gain a temporary tenant in the building, which has been great since the building was not being utilized because it was closed due to due to COVID and due to not having somebody to manage or be there to open the building full-time during the week. So we do have a temporary tenant in our building that came to us through CCET. They sent a group over called Birch Media and I'm sure all of you are well aware of Birch Media since they're filming TV show The Crypt here in the town, but they're utilizing the bulk of our space right now. They started to move in in mid-July. They'll be there through the end of September. Let's see, what else? I mentioned we have a new and updated website. We are working on looking at our membership tiers, just trying to make sure that they remain, like I said, competitive and beneficial to the community. So there will be some changes to our membership tiers coming in the next couple of months. That committee is working on something to present to the board at our next meeting in September. And with that, that was a lot of information. I'm trying to be respectful of my 10-minute time limit, but with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
No, I just, I don't have a lot of questions. It was a lot of information that you've covered.
We've been busy.
I really liked the code of conduct for your board. And it sounds like you got a healthy board and be nice to have some funding for a director. Get Chrissy back or, or whatever. Yeah, it's a busy, busy time.
It is a busy time, yeah. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Appreciate all of your guys' hard efforts over there. Thank you to the rest of the board that's watching. Thank you. You don't hear it enough, we know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so now we're going to get a Columbia County Economic Team, also known as CCET, Paul Vogel, interim director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you see me and hear me?
Yep, we can.
Hearing is a lot more important than seeing. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity to come back and visit with you again. I, I had been in the job a couple of weeks, I think, when, when we talked last. So I'm glad to be back and give an update. It was, it's great to follow Dan and the activity and really the momentum that, that the South County Chamber is, is, is gaining. Let me just focus. I'd like to tell you about everything we're doing and I can't, there's no time and it would bore you to tears, but maybe focus really just on small business, big business and collaboration with the city as general categories if I could. As you recall, really my charge when I took on this interim role from the board was to pivot hard to small business and and that's not just been small business, but that's been other folks that serve small business that, that we've been engaging with. We, we began our daily newsletter that we put out. We use that as a vehicle to deliver resources as well as just information, perspective, thought pieces, that sort of thing. Promote our PPE store. We produce that every day. And for anybody who's done a newsletter, it's an everyday thing. We're getting, we're getting smoother at it, but it's, it really helps keep us in touch with, with topics that are going on outside the community that can benefit businesses inside the community. We've increased our, our listserv on that newsletter by over 12% since we began it. And, and that's really the objective is just to reach as, as broad universe as we possibly can within the county. We do bi-weekly refreshes on our website. We, we launched the Small Biz Hub website, which Chrissy, by the way, designed and and we, we update that every two weeks daily. If there's a major announcement out of the state or something like that, we'll, we'll update that day. But typically, we try to refresh it every two weeks. We've increased, we, we've achieved a over 600% increase in traffic on the website and as well as stay duration has increased remarkably. And our bounce rate is down because we've actually added more depth to the site. So people have a lot more reason to go there. We also use the site and, and other means to conduct surveys with small business. And not dissimilar, but not as extensive as, as the one the city has done, is, is hearing about today. And we do, we, we use that to find out what, what, how things have changed with small businesses, what, how their needs have changed, how activity is changing, what are they finding? Also to get their, their views on, on things that still need to occur. And our most recent one, and I think this was brought up in a previous council meeting, is demonstrated that there's a great concern and a significant impact from childcare uncertainty for small businesses. Now, when people think about childcare, they think about their own kids or they think about their friends' kids. It's somebody else's kids. But what the businesses told us was not only around education, they're concerned about childcare for teachers rather holistically. Teachers' childcare, but also the impact on their own employees and, and their ability to either schedule or, or pay for childcare. And frankly, they're, the impact on their own businesses from needing to shift around schedules and literally some of them altering their own business hours so they can actually schedule employees often due to childcare issues. We're not trying to get in the childcare business at CSAT, but it, it's very clear that it's a business issue. And so we are talking to everyone who will listen and, and some really great listeners are right there at the city to, to help stand up a longer-term look, a task force, if you will, around childcare, but also take some immediate actions, even using COVID funding where it's available to assist with childcare in ways that, 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 that are sustainable and that make a difference. It's a big, huge issue. It's a big problem. It's not going to get solved tomorrow, but we think that there are some incremental things through workforce, through material purchases and that sort of thing that we may be able to help out with. As I say, we're not trying to get in the business, what we're trying to do is help mobilize folks who are smart about this stuff, who can carry this thing forward. And, and, and it's a conversation, as I mentioned, that is involved staff at the city, particularly Rachel Berry. Has been extremely useful to the Northwest Childcare Resource and Referral Service and, and, and is somebody we're talking with. So I, I guess I wanted to just land on that hard as a commercial message. It's not something in the COVID mix that was necessarily on my, on my mind. But it shows what happens when you actually ask businesses what's on their minds. And, and so we've taken that on as something that we need to really lock arms with a bunch of folks and, and help, help find some solutions. We've had good engagement with the chambers. I'm pleased to say that I presented with all of the chambers. We've had interaction in the meetings, but also with individual chamber members, particularly the South, South County Chamber. We've, we've gone back and forth, providing resources and, and ideas and suggestions. Dan mentioned, him mentioned the movie. We originally got the lead on that and we thought, yeah, we need to get those to people who know more about this stuff. So we were able to get them connected with the, the building committee. I think, I hope it's still in place. Sounds like the production is actually going to use or one time was planning to use the chamber offices or the offices available for their production offices. We've, and we've been able to connect them with, with businesses all over, all over the county. St. Helens got experience with movies. And it's not the end-all, be-all, but at a time like this, the impact to small businesses that provide food, goods, gas, all of that stuff. It's a nice infusion that was never expected. And people have been terrific collaborators and just, hey, do you know about this? Do you know about that? Can you talk to these guys and just hand them off, let them, deal with them directly? The more people we can put them in contact, the production in contact with that isn't us, the better, because they're better served that way. We've also got, obviously, keep it local, coordinates on a daily basis really with the chambers and, and is pushing out small business information and promotion. And from what I was listening to with Dan, we, we've got a focus for this fall around around training and maybe updating on some techniques for e-commerce and that sort of thing for small businesses. The business climate has changed. The business environment has changed. And, and it's very clear from a lot of the feedback that we get, including grant applications, that, that folks need some new tools and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to collaborate with the chamber on, on providing that training. We stood up the PPE store. It started a little bit slow. I'm happy to say that we've, we've increased traffic over the last couple of weeks by about 50%. It's still underutilized. So every Friday afternoon, or Friday from nine to two at the Fairgrounds of St. Helens, gate two, we're there providing high-quality masks and, and high-quality masks and, and, as well as gloves and sanitizer. And we've also got only about 160,000 disposable masks that we received through the county that we're more than happy to give to folks. And I'm happy to say-
Oh, yeah, 160,000, huh?
Well, they gave us 200,000 and I've rounded down a little bit, because we've given away quite a few. But those are, those are available, you know, we're not, we don't like the idea of just filling the landfill. On the other hand, when businesses have customers come in and they don't have masks, if you can get them to wear a mask, let's give them a mask. And, and so we found this particularly helpful for museums and the nonprofits. Some of the churches have been in, and frankly, a lot of businesses have been in, because they, they buy good quality masks, they've got good PPE for their employees. But they can, they can come in and get a chunk of 200 masks, that'll last them a week or two. And anything we can do to encourage people to be wearing masks and do every small thing it takes to try and keep what is still a pretty fortunate record of infections in Columbia County, the better off the business climate's gonna be and the better off everyone's gonna be. So, one more shameless plug, PPE Store Fridays. You can go to smallbizhub.columbiacountyoregon.com. Download an order form, shoot it to us. We'll have your order ready for you on Friday. And Wella, who you probably know that works with me, she and I are always out there, at least one of us. We kind of use that as our, our distanced office time. And it's, it's been a great opportunity to meet business owners and, and, and folks who are running, running organizations that we haven't had a chance to meet. We're always happy to have visitors. In fact, Rachel has, Rachel Berry has scheduled a meeting out there during, during the PPE store on Friday. So making good use of the time and the space. I'll keep moving. The most important thing maybe that we've been able to do is the Small Business Emergency Grant Program. And I think when we talked last, we had made a proposal to the county. The county came up with $100,000. We turned that into $250,000 with the state. And we have just this week sent out the award letters to the successful grantees. I think there were 52 total awards, somewhere around $210,000, representing businesses all throughout the county. I think more than a third of them were from St. Helens. And so those awards have, have come out. It took a little while to get this done. We, we needed to do a lot of coaching and, and help with, with some of the businesses to, to get the applications done. But I will assure you that they have been very quick at getting, getting their acceptance and certifications back. So that's happening this week, and we'll be pushing that money out the door just as soon as, as soon as we get their acceptances. And we're working with COLPAK on that. They're doing the grant administration. There's another grant round through the state that's expected to happen in a month or so. It should be a larger chunk of money. It should come with fewer restrictions, because in the previous grant round, a business could not have received idle or PPE money from, from the CARES Act. In this case, we believe that that restriction will be lifted. So if you receive PPP, if you receive idle money, you can still apply for a grant this, this next go-around. And we'll be administering that with COLPAK. If it comes to pass, and we believe, believe it will, they'll announce something late, late August, early September. And we will, by all means, be publicizing that. One other grant that COLPAK also got is an EDA grant, and it's for the region, for their entire COLPAK region, Columbia, Klatsch, Tullamook. And our request was, it was very general, we have to now put a plan to it, is for small business services, whether, whether it's bringing in SPD center or whether it's just developing other services around small business. That's what our, that's what our focus will be with any money that we get from that EDA grant. We have a meeting tomorrow to trudge through all the requirements and figure out how we're gonna implement that. But that'll be, that'll be something with, hopefully, we'll get the, the, the money late, late this year and kick into play next year in Columbia County. Big business, we've got five large industrial projects pending that we've responded to through either Business Oregon or Greater Portland Inc., which is the, the metro area economic development district. More than a third of those proposals are, actually, more than half of those proposals are for St. Helens sites. And, and so, and we've been collaborating with the port and also the cities and gathering data. These are, these are very detail-driven, very data-driven, a lot of blanks to fill in, a lot of spreadsheets to do and all of that. One of them, though, actually targeted the Armstrong property and two other sites in Oregon. So we already made the shortlist with that one. So we're hopeful. And, and we continue to do that, and we're anxious to get our, our marketing stuff pulled together a bit more so that we're actually being more proactive in working with brokers and others to go chase, chase clients as opposed to just accepting RFIs as they come in. I need to touch a little bit on the, and I want to be respectful of your time, collaboration with the city, which has been terrific, John and his staff. We've collaborated and discussed, talked through quite a bit, the CRF funding and where there was need and what were some ideas for that. And, and I think the city's made good use of that in, in providing some support for CSAT through its dues, through the CRF funding. And in my view, that's a, that's a, that's a great use, but particularly to the community organizations and social service agencies, those folks that the city really got on the ball and developed a great list for recipients for the CRF money. The South County initiatives that we're working on, the work, the worksheets, the work plan, I think Rachel, she hasn't told you already, as a group, will be reporting back to each of the, each of the city leadership and the county leadership and the port leadership over the next month, month and a half. Those are progressing. I keep pointing to Rachel, I hope I'm not getting her in trouble, but she's been very supportive on the childcare front, also working with our collaborators. And, and that's largely as part of the, the County Economic Recovery Team, which the city's very involved in as well, collaborating on the Lewis and Clark Trail thing and tourism, as well as some industrial real estate stuff. We, we met together with the new prospective owner of the Armstrong property last week. It's good to be, good to actually have a face-to-face meeting in the first place. But second of all, it's good to meet early with somebody who's, who's now wanting to be a player, pending some conditions and that sort of thing. And, and is, is a little more local, as far as one of the most desirable industrial sites that we've got. We're also active in tourism. I won't, I won't belabor that. I just got off a tourism call that involved the entire coast. And frankly, the coast is having a very tough time of it. We still had to report in that we're not having a tough time of it in terms of tourism in, in Columbia County, because our numbers are up. And we are not suffering sort of the disrespect and the trash and, and, and frankly, the, the, well, just the disrespect that, that the coast is experiencing with people who may not be regular visitors to the coast. Fortunately, Columbia County, our strategy is around the outdoors and recreation, and that's because we have a lot of it. And if you look at the county, county facilities, camping and park facilities are 150% over last year. If you look at Scappus Bay, the port is, the port is actually sitting down, I think, today and talking about expanding the Marina complex down there to accommodate more people. They're, they're averaging between 1,000 and 1,200 a weekend, just in, just in the kayak business out there. And the trails and the parks are seeing an awful lot of traffic. So we're benefiting from having the great outdoors. This is a great time to be in that, to be in that space. And we're also not the destination that the coast, the coast is, where everybody says, okay, we can't get out of our, couldn't get out of our house, let's go to the beach. They go to the beach and they're not necessarily great visitors. And we're not suffering that yet. I think people are still being pretty respectful and they bring in stuff, they buy stuff, and they carry stuff out. So we're, you know, fingers crossed. But, but really, the, the recovery and the resilience and the respect is, is what, what, what we're preaching with, with the tourism community. Moving forward, and I'll finally tie it to, to tie it up in a bow. We do have an executive director search underway to, I'm just the interim guy still. I can't report to you because I'm a candidate. You'd have to talk to my board to find out where they stand on that. We are also just completing our membership renewal for CSAT. And I'm, you know, it's, it's a, it's a challenging time to ask folks for, for dues and for money, but, but our renewal rate has been extremely good. And we're beginning a new member drive to increase the base, the funding base that we've got for CSAT to a broader range of businesses throughout the county. So those are a couple of things that are, that are going on underway right now. I hope I touched on the things that you cared about, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you've got any.
The only one I have is about childcare, I guess, would be how important it is for, like you said, not just the business and the employees of the business, but also for the customer as well. And what are, what are you guys' thought process on, where are you guys heading with that, I guess?
Well, at this point, and, you know, part of this is intentional, because we should not be leading a childcare thing, because we know nothing about it. We've, we've partnered up with the Northwest Childcare Resource and Referral Organization, which is contracted with Northwest ESD.
Yep.
And they've actually got a person, Dorit is based in St. Helens, and she's, she's, she's our Columbia County person. We've gotten together with them, we've given them ideas, we've told them, we'll connect them with people, we'll help convene people, we'll keep preaching this thing and get them introduced to people. We're very interested in building a list of names for them to talk with about a task force, the long-term task force, to kind of get this thing broken down into chunks. And our, it, it's, it's a big issue to tackle and is, our priority is to help provide energy and support behind this and do whatever we can, but not lead it, because I know, I know nothing about childcare. And so we're still in the early days of getting traction. And, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get the early stages of, of kind of an organizing around a task force and see, see where all that goes. Frankly, one of our first priorities is to contact any of the cities that have not expended their, their CRF money and find out if there are ways, there are materials that they could purchase or PPE for kids or sanitizer or that sort of thing that's helpful to daycare centers, whether they're a two-person or a 20-person. And use those immediate resources right now to help, because those have to be expended by the end of December. That's, those are some of the short-term actions, starting to build a list of names and getting the, the referral, the resource or referral bunch introduced to people throughout the county is, is a big part of what we're doing.
Sure.
One of the questions you mentioned that we're doing well on the outdoor tourism business, where could we enlarge the, what facilities do we need to enlarge to really push that further forward?
That's a, that's a good question. We, we don't, we don't own any of them ourselves. And so the, the port is, is looking at expanding, particularly for kayaks and canoes and self-propelled vessels down, down at Scappus Bay. They're looking at their own facilities and also at camping. It'll be interesting to see, I don't think the county has looked at its campgrounds, particularly for expanding in the past, because they've been largely, they've not been at capacity. And, and after this year, I think they need to take a look at that and say, look, we're, we're at capacity or more right now. Is this trend gonna continue? Have we, have we, have we been, have we exposed to new visitors, new users? And that sort of thing, to, to the degree that we need to expand? Or probably more likely, they're gonna want to do a couple of years of this sort of pandemic period to find out if the trend continues. We are not in an expansion mode, but in terms of, in terms of attractions here, the CSAT Board allocated $25,000 at their meeting last month to complete the interpretive signage on the CZ Trail, which is an extremely popular trail, no matter what kind of feet you're using, whether they're hoes or cycles or hiking, dogs and, and that sort of thing. They've got a historical kiosk program designed and underway. And so we allocated the money to complete that through money we got out of Travel Oregon to complete that from Scappus all the way to Vernonia. And it also ties into several other trail systems, both leading into the county and throughout the county. And it's something that their program really calls for, working with each of, each of the cities and the communities for kiosks that tie into that design all the way through the county. In terms of other facilities, I don't know. The, we're, we're today gathering, trying to gather data from the motels in the county to get a sense of, of occupancy. We're getting, anecdotally, we're getting information that they're, that they're above half and close to full at times. You've got the Northwest Natural Project that has been filling a couple of the hotels. You've got the, the film production, I think, that has booked quite a number of rooms for a long period of time. Not sure whether that data's really gonna tell us what we need to know. We need to kind of watch that on a cycling basis throughout, not only the summer and the, and the travel season, but also on through the winter and, and, you know, only, only then will we, we be able to kind of make determinations whether there's more expansion necessary there. So I don't have a great answer for you. I've just got some anecdotal in terms of, you know, those day-use facilities, particularly that, that, that people are flocking to, largely from the Portland area, but frankly, there's a lot of people from Columbia County getting outside.
I had a little bit of feedback about, just because I've used most of the parks in the county. I don't know, and you're not the county, you're the port. But in talking about regional draws, a lot of the county-owned facilities are very dated and very aged. And, you know, we have a lot of real estate out here that is very attractive, but when bathrooms are 40, 30, 40 years old at best and are not, am not accessible to lots of folks. And it's just, there's a lot of upgrades, and maybe they would do well to get some grant funding or some travel funding to upgrade some of those amenities, like at Prescott Beach and at Trojan and at Camp Wilkerson, that those are huge draws, but there's just not enough there. I think that those, that could be real moneymakers for the county if they put a little bit of investment and a little bit of time in there. That, you know, people are looking for stuff and everything in the state is packed nine months out. So I mean, the other thing is a lot of county parks close Labor Day weekend, and some of the best camping weather we get is in September. So it's just my feedback about, having been a lifelong camper in the state of Oregon, that that's what I see as some real room for growth, some kind of low-hanging fruit. You don't need to create a new park, you need to make the most of all the real estate you already have.
Well, and, and those are good points, and particularly for somebody who, who is a camper and, you know, the, the, in discussion with the county, I mean, some of those facilities probably have not gotten more funding because we've been under capacity. There's nothing like being at, at bursting, you know, bursting at the seams and probably to have new users coming in who, who might have similar views of how dated things are and how maybe they need to be upgraded. Getting that kind of feedback, I'm gonna get, circle back with the county and make sure they're getting, they're getting feedback cards and that sort of thing from people, because that's a good way to drive investments.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of look at it the other way. It's Field of Dreams. Build it and they will come. You know, you gotta, you gotta have something worth driving out here for. Otherwise, people stop looking, keep going.
Well, and, and right now, we're a great alternative, but moving forward, assuming we come out of all this, we want them coming back, because they want to come back. So
Right, right.
That's great feedback. I'll, I'll pass along to our partners there.
So to follow up on my question earlier about the childcare, would that fall through that fall under maybe CARES Act? Because I, for people that don't know, childcare can cost $500 a week. And for me to go out and work a $13-an-hour job, waitressing or whatever, to pay childcare for that day, you know, maybe $100 a day, by the time I'm done, I'm better off at standing on unemployment, which doesn't benefit my employer, because he has to train somebody new. But, and then that's if I'm accepted for unemployment. By the time I offset that cost of childcare, knowing that our children are, if they're at home, the, the younger ones especially, need to have an assistant in learning how to read. I mean, we all can teach a kindergartner how to read, every last one of us here. But there also needs to be some type of like intern, and like through ESD, maybe heading it up, with interns in smaller pods. But there also needs to be some type of like intern and like through ESD, maybe heading it up with interns and smaller pods. And I know it's been talked about, but even those are talked about three to 500 bucks a, a week. Even the pods that, that are being discussed like through YMCA. So it's something that needs to be definitely addressed. You know, a 12-year-old can sit at home and make top ramen and a bowl of cereal and you're comfortable enough to know that they're going to be okay. Um, uh, anybody younger, especially, you know, um, I think the, the age used to be nine. After nine, they can be home alone, um, by state law. Um, I don't know what the, what it is now, when they're older, so, um, but it definitely needs to be addressed. That is one thing that is really huge. And if it fell under the CARES Act, because there's a lot of money there, well, as long as the governor doesn't get it.
I mean, you, you, you've raised one part of, uh, one of the complexities of this is the cost. The affordability of childcare is an issue. Uh, I'm told by, by the experts that Columbia County, uh, of all the counties they serve, Columbia County has the most active childcare, uh, community, um, that they serve. And there are a lot, there are a number of, of daycare providers who are losing money every day because they know they need to stay open because their employees, because their, their, uh, the parents need to be working, particularly if they're on reduced hours and that sort of thing under COVID. Um, so, so you get the cost and then you've also got wages. Uh, childcare wages typically are, are bare bones and often don't pay for a childcare employee to get childcare. And so that's another thorny part of the problem. And then you've got, you've got certifications and you've got fees and all of that. And, and we, we, uh, we were glad to see a number of, uh, daycare facilities and childcare facilities apply for grants.
Good.
Uh, under the emergency small business. There are others out there that need help and the question is how do you, how do you provide that? And that, that's what we're trying to tackle is using CARES money to deal with, uh, protection and sanitization and materials, because you know, under the new standards, uh, Johnny can't use Scotty's toys. Each kid has to have their own materials and toys. And not only is it common sense, but it's actually under the guidance. And so where do you get, where, how do you cover the cost of doing that? So those are some things that we can tackle right now. But the bigger, the bigger really societal issues you're talking about is affordability of childcare and how do I afford to work in childcare? And those, those are really two of the big, the big parts of the nut.
Yeah, like you said, it's really not your forte, but, uh, it's part of the wheelhouse.
That's, it's something that's pretty easy to get passionate about.
Any other questions for Paul? Don't see anybody. Okay, Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a report on community surveys. Rachel Berry.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Council. I am going to attempt to share my screen. I just wanted to give a really high-level overview. It's been a long time coming. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, that is wonderful. So thank you all for, um, for your support in this endeavor and for going out and asking our community. It, it has been many moons. This was a pre-COVID activity. And wanted to share some of this even while we are still building the report, but wanted to have you to have the basic information as we're moving forward and readjusting. I know you are all very familiar with our mission and you will see each of these points and the key points of our mission really borne out in the survey and, and what we can do moving forward. So we went out to the community after long ago State of the City address opened back in January and ran for about two months via, through weekday. We were talking to anybody and everyone and trying to get their input. There were web links and social media opportunities for folks who are savvy with technology and, uh, also emailed invitations. It was great. I was also invited to church fellowship hours and to our senior center. So we really got a good, a good response. Oh, hang on, let me back up. About the response, we got about 5% of the population, this is standard, I was hoping for more. But about a 5% response rate. Of those people responding, about three-quarters made some sort of comments. This is important, it was important to me because it shows that people really love this community and really want to be engaged and really have, have things and thoughts to share with you and all of us as staff. Um, we got a really good distribution in terms of how long folks have lived in this community. Got a, a good chunk of folks who have been here for a generation, those 21-plus years. Also the, the newer arrivals, folks who have been here for two to five years and who are in that mid-range. Maybe they've come here to start a family, maybe they've come here for our quality of life and are, are now settling in as our neighbors. The age distribution of respondents was also pretty shocking to me. Shocking in that many age groups were represented. We even have some of these folks, I mean, not so much on the younger end. Um, but some of these folks that are starting their lives and careers out here really took the time and it was long. I think each of you took it, and if you will recall, it was a longer survey. This was not a three-question, you know, fly-by survey. This really took some thought. So that was an impressive thing for, for me to see. People cared enough to take the time. Many of these folks, uh, are working full-time here. We've got some part-time, some doing volunteer work and looking, number of folks that are retired. And you'll see that the type of structure folks live in really matches the housing mix that we have available right now. So yes, small number and scientists will debate how representative it is, but I feel like we got a good swipe at a cross-section of folks to inform it. And one of the earliest questions was, what do you like most about living in St. Helens? And I don't know if there are any surprises here. The small-town feel, the safety of our community, that proximity to nature and the river that keeps coming up. Proximity, this has been echoed by many of you, like through our SWAT analysis and conversations. Our proximity, proximity to metro, proximity to the coast, that type of thing. We went through and asked about core services. And yes, it's, this is very validating. We do a really solid job of providing core services. Positive and neutral rankings for your streets, your sewers, stormwater, the core responsibilities of a city and, and really key things that we deliver to our residents and businesses. Folks had really positive or neutral results, comments on the quality of customer service. Also, all overall value of tourism events. There are areas for improvement, of course, everywhere. We had the least, least satisfaction in our effectiveness of economic development efforts. Happy to follow Paul and talk about where we go moving forward. And I did, as we went through and as I am presenting this to you, these are the folks who are very satisfied, satisfied, but also neutral. Also like, yes, great city provides these services, they don't have strong feelings in either direction. And those of you who know me, know I call that a win. Here, we're going to be very heavy on charts here for the next couple of slides. Yeah, the satisfaction and neutral feelings around the streets, sewer services, water services, customer service, tourism events. We've got work to do down here, you can see the communication and that, the economic development efforts was one of our key areas for, for improvement. So we then went ahead and folks really did take the time to go through each one of our major program areas and rate us. And we've got a lot of great news to share. One is around the value of public safety services, folks feel they receive. It's ranked very high in terms of the comments. I, I need to call out 91% have no negative feelings about the quality of police services. This struck me because you usually don't deal with the police on your best day. It's usually not one of the greatest days you've ever had if you're interacting with law enforcement. So I thought that was, that was a standout to me. And also it shows that the community events and the real, you know, on-the-ground interaction that our PD has with folks makes a difference. Yeah, and here we go, breaking out, broken out in a little more detail. Patrol, police visibility was another thing. In maybe investments in branding and new vehicles might be part of this. Uh, and the events, and I know that, that Crystal and the PD team works really hard to promote our events when we were able to have them. So good opportunity to continue that. Also, many, many positive comments about the public library. And overall rating, you know, the facilities that are wonderful and expanding and we're able to offer more services coming out of the pandemic. Customer service, many comments about positive customer service. The collection, the programs that are offered. There is some room, well, many folks do not, you will see this not applicable bar. So many of the respondents just aren't using the internet or the computer, so can't, can't speak to that. And I'd be interested, I'm interested to see this in another two years now that more folks have had the opportunity to use the online services and have seen the pivot that has happened during COVID. Here is an area that's getting a lot of traffic right now, our parks and trails and talking about the value of outdoor recreation to our community. Many folks are able to find parks, the landscaping and maintenance is positive or fair. And the overall rating is really very positive for our 135 acres of parks. There's a really small team with public work support that, that really keep up our parks very well. Also asked about how many parks people know of. And this was suggested by our Parks and Trail Chair, Carmen Dunn. Um, and she, she was great and gave some really good input as to how to design this and how, how they can best move the work forward. Uh, I'm not sure who's muted or not, I can't see that, but, and I don't know if anyone wants to take a guess at the number of parks we have in the city. The quiz.
I'll take a shot.
Yeah.
I'll say there's 13.
Oh, you'll be right. Good job, Mr. Mayor. There are 13 parks in the city of St. Helens, right? And remember, our tiny staff and the support of Public Works maintained 13 parks, so, big deal. And then we've got, we see that we've got some really high users. We've got some, you know, off-and-on users. And this is another, I think, coming through this COVID experience and the push to outdoor recreation. Really excited to see how these numbers change over time. We also had some indoor recreation programs to talk about that are now taking so many different forms. People feel that they get a really good value from those recreation programs. The other customer service has been high across all areas. And this really speaks volume to the quality, the talent and the dedication of the staff that we have, staff and volunteers working on our behalf. Yep, and good reviews of programs.
That's a pretty good percentage on all those. I mean, really, from excellent to good, um, all are at 50 or better, so that's.
Yep.
Yeah.
And really, folks finding a lot of value in having this and serving some of those. We can talk more about school-age kids and families and how we, how we, how we do livability, right? Livability is in our mission, it's one of our goals. This is a way that we really take it out and, and do the work of livability. Elected leadership and staff. In this area, we see a lot of folks who haven't had a lot of interaction with, with leadership and staff. And that's fine too. We do find, uh, high marks for overall operations and programs and services, opportunities to participate. But this is probably the area that we can do a better job in telling the story and, um, and working with folks, listening, that type of thing. I've kind of broken out some, some points because these are the areas where we can really do a better job telling the story and being responsive. We had, um, yep, overall operations of programs, very positive and neutral ratings. Open and responsive staff leadership was a, was a strong area. And working to develop and preserve a high quality of life. There were, um, back to that economic development piece. We see this, these responses that folks feel that we support business very well and this may be the partnership and some of those chamber and economic team partnerships. Um, but still feel like we've got a lot of room for growth in the economic development phase. So this naturally brings out some opportunities. Folks feel that there, there are opportunities to participate, but there's room for improvement in listening and informing residents. And I think that we're already, we're already taking a lot of steps on these. And then that, back to that promoting the economic health of our city. And this had a higher level of dissatisfaction. But I think this is a really good opportunity for us moving forward to do some proactive messaging and to really lean on our partners too, who do that work, right? Water sewer, public safety, we, we're super strong, these are city core services. And maybe this is the place where we bring in our partners and do that economic development work. Um, also lots of room for growth in managing and planning for, for growth. Because we are growing. This is a great tool for everyone. And I know Crystal and I were really excited to see this and use this information. Our website, our social media, um, these are, are the places people turn to. Also word of mouth, I know my, my neighbors ask me all the time what's happening or they come to me with bits of information and it's a good opportunity for us all to be sharing common messages and really working that, that neighbor-to-neighbor interaction. Our local newspaper was another really strong source that, that folks turn to. City-produced materials are turned to for information and this is great. This is a good opportunity to do more proactive information sharing through our own channels. Are the folks, folks weren't really aware that we had a cable channel. So we'll see as we come out of this and especially now that we've shifted and we're not in chambers and broadcast on, on Cable Channel 29. Something, things to think about and look at though, as to what channels folks are turning to. Couple of open-ended questions and here's another one. That really can resonate and really can drive some planning and communication. What do you see as the greatest challenges? Local jobs, safety, economic development, managing growth and making sure that we are thinking forward and planning for this growth. Really the highest, the highest number of comments came in, in that area, so. So what have we been up to? As I mentioned, there has been a time lag in this, when the survey happened and then COVID happening right away. And the sharing of this being delayed, um, and I apologize. What we set out to better understand what folks think of the services we provide, what our community expects of us and if we're headed in the right direction. Also got a little bit at that, how, how citizens can engage with their government and really for this to be a team sport. In the meantime, you all don't, don't need me to remind you, but I will. Undertaking that development of a strategic work plan really gets at a lot of these areas for improvement and seeks to maintain our strengths. Our opportunities fall within our goals. Also validating that we didn't find a lot of the kind of often left-field things we hadn't considered. There weren't any real big surprises, which is a good thing. There weren't any real big surprises, which is a good thing. And, and this is, this does emphasize that commitment to transparency and accountability and focusing our resources that best serve the needs of our growing community. And some of these great, great opportunities to partner and to really build the, build the network and to build the inclusion in our city for livability and smart growth and prosperity moving forward. You all undertook quite a bit of work to really take that hard look at our goals and to set strategic actions to move forward. So, thank you for that. I know this is really brief and I feel like I'm droning on, so if you have any questions, happy to take them.
I have just a one question to kind of frame some of those results. What was the date range of the respondents?
They were, it, the survey kicked off on January eleventh and closed on February twenty-ninth.
So, really pre-COVID and winter?
Absolutely.
Wanted to make sure that there are a lot of events that have happened in the last five months that might have skewed some of those answers.
Absolutely.
I just didn't know, I knew when it kicked off, but I didn't know when the respondents closed. Thank you. It's a lot of information.
And this will be available at some point, hopefully soon, in a beautiful print report, and there's tons of data. If you have questions about specific areas, or, you know, if you really want to, if you want to drill down, we can do that for, we can do that.
I would like to have a sit-down with you about some of the areas. Just to like talk about what you're working on and where you see there's some low-hanging fruit. Just kind of just brainstorm. I had a conversation with a staff person here a week or so ago, and they're like, wow, I could have talked to you before we did this. And it's like, that, you know, sometimes you lose track because it's not in my core responsibility area. And I always think, oh, Rachel's got this, but if I don't talk to you, you don't have it. You know, I'll get back to you and we'll set up a time.
Wonderful. Yes, please.
Well, I just, I, I'm looking at it, and I know that we have a lot of work to do. Um, the city council does know that, as far as, you know, I think we're rated fairly low on that. And, uh, you know, with our goals and our new agenda and moving forward and, uh, working on D I E I starting last year, um, and continuing to work on that to make it a opening uh, effective government, and all are welcome, and that we encourage people to, to participate. And we, we do try to do a lot of that on social media. Will still continue to do that, and, uh, and we have a lot of planning that people don't know about, that, that, if they just started asking or reviewing, they would know a lot more. So, um, but it's good that, that we actually have that constructive criticism and know that we've got room for growth there, looks like quite a bit, as a council. You know, and I'm hoping our, our, uh, mantra, which I'll be reading later, will just, um, you know, I think that will kind of, you know, that's the, you know, Chamber had to do, um, their, their little thing to keep everybody on the same page, and, uh, that's what we're doing, and, um, yeah. We definitely got some work to do. Yep.
And we're doing it.
Overall though, it looked like most other areas were, were fairly good. Looked like we were the lowest, to be honest with everybody, I mean, looking at that. So, we'll do what we can, when we can, go and do so much. So, anything that you as staff can suggest to any of us in the future to help us, let us know. Because we're, we're serving these citizens, you know, and that was surveyed with five percent of our city. You know, and we work for them all. But, good job. Uh, it's, um, good to see, you know, the response on the police station, especially with everything that's going on, uh, continuing our, the citizens, you know, deep in the police movement and just how they interact with our police department. Uh, that was pre-all this, so that says a lot.
Mayor, if I can make a comment there. A lot of, this, uh, community surveys, so I would call it a kind of inaugural or a benchmark survey, there's, we're not really measuring it against anything else, and a lot of communities will do these things fairly regularly, not every year, maybe every other year, every two, three, three years. Ask a similar set of a question, so you can measure, measure progress over time and change. This is, this is really just the first cut benchmark, and what we, we look at in the future will be, um, having, it'll be more meaningful, I believe, so.
Rachel, one of the big parts of this town is our education department. And as you pointed out, our real problems got started after you finished your, uh, survey. Uh, the next time around, is there any way to get a view of how much education or the problems of education affect our town?
Sure, I mean, this is a great opportunity to partner with our school district. That is, for everything a city does, education is out of our purview. But, it's a really good opportunity for partnership, and I would love to even see if we can do maybe a side-by-side or, or if there's some way to, um, to coordinate with St. Helens School District in the next time we run a survey.
Yeah, well, I, I know that it's quote separate, but education of a town is basically one of the biggest building blocks of the town, but I know how it's split up, and that's what I see as the bother. We're kind of overlooking for legal reasons, if you would, a big building block that makes our town good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah, that's a great point, and it's also a big part of our economic development and how our, our community livability and viability. So, yeah, let's, um, let's think it through and think about some meaningful ways to, to ask the right questions about, about education in St. Helens.
Rachel, are you all doing surveys at the, um, the CSET store on Fridays?
We? We've scheduled our regional, our regional meetings there to accommodate the PPE store, so we get to hear, we get to see, see what's going on.
Yeah, Paul informed us, so, uh, any other questions for Rachel? All right, good job, Rachel.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, review proposed bench donation for McCormick Park off-leash park area. And is that, uh, gonna be Jenny Denso, maybe?
Uh, Rick, can I ask you a real quick question? Way back when, there used to be a big fight whether the arts and culture group had overview of that or the city had overview, that's, I'm getting that from the field way back when, and there was all sorts of divisions, quotations and all, so can you kind of explain how you got to where you are right now? I, I'm basically trying to point out that we solved some of the problems that used to arrive when something like this was donated.
Sure. Um, I'm not completely sure who brought this to this, um, the agenda, to be honest with you.
Sue has come.
The Parks Commission. And I can tell you about that.
Okay, somebody jump on in there.
Okay, so, uh, what has happened is, is that anything that happens in a park uh, must go through the Parks Commission, and there was some, there was some issues way back when, Steve, with uh, the Arts and Cultural Commission wanted to put a park bench on a, in, over Campbell Park. I think this, that was the incident, and it was too close to third baseline where it, where it uh, or first base, I'm not certain which, one of the baselines. But, you know, where they wanted to put it was infringing on a, uh, on the baseball field, on the softball field. So that was, uh, an issue. I think there were several of the, uh, individuals in the, uh, on the Parks Commission that gave pushback about the placement of it, and then the Arts and Cultural Commission wanted it to be in that place. So, there was a little bit of, uh, kind of push and shove and, and take, and, and I think we got it resolved, uh, with the city council. So, the city council has final say where something is going to go, but it needs to be recommend. Those kinds of things need to be recommended to the city council by the Arts and Cultural Commission. The Arts and Cultural Commission does not have final say. The city council has final say. And the same, uh, with, uh, parks benches and anything like that goes to the, uh, uh, Parks and Trails Commission, and they give recommendations to the, to the council, so that's what.
I was waiting, or, you know, worried more about, who did they ask first? The fact this is a bench and it goes into the parks, there's no question that the parks should take care of the whole thing. Uh, I was trying to just clear the air, if it was an art thing, then the, uh, Arts Commission should have the first go. If it's a park thing, the park should have it.
It's a matter of a placement, that, where the placement is, I think, where the Parks Commission gets involved.
Okay.
And, uh, the Parks Commission's been open to any kinds of benches, they welcome any kind of bench, especially when it comes from the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Okay. As I say, this should have been taken care of by the Parks Commission straight out, and, uh, I don't like to see overlap, which you could have comments, because I hear there were great comments way back when.
Yeah.
And, as I say, the, the column should have said parks, bench, end of story.
Well, so, I think, I think what they, uh, what they have done is reached out to Sue Nelson and then working with her as far as, because she's our interim Public Works Director, so I'm going to ask Sue to respond to this.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, there is a process that the city adopted several years ago for donation of public items, not necessarily just benches. Uh, can be artwork or a multitude of other items. And in this particular case, it was a park bench specifically for the McCormick Park Dog Off-Leash Area. So, um, the policy states that when an item is offered as a donation that it will go to the appropriate commission, either the Parks Commission or the Arts and Cultural Commission, and I should have said Parks and Trails Commission, I apologize. Or both, if it is an, if it's potentially an art object to be placed in a park, it may need to go to both commissions. Those commissions or co, single commission would then make a recommendation to the city council to accept that particular item. So that's the process that was followed. It was what was adopted by the council, um, several years ago. So, that this is a bench, simple bench, it's not an art object. It went to the Parks Commission, it was unanimously recommended for placement, uh, in the, um, Dog Off-Leash Area. And so now it's coming to the city council for approval.
And to back up on that just a bit, uh, the person that oversees the placement on that and is responsible for the placement, the, the Parks Commission, uh, and the Parks and Trails Commission gave the staff, uh, jurisdiction to place it where they felt was most appropriate. And that would be our Parks Ground Supervisor, Thad. And it would also rest on, uh, Sue Nelson's shoulders at this time. So the collaboration between Thad and Sue, uh, placing that park bench, uh, uh, to the recommendation of the Parks and Trails Commission is, uh, what they've recommended. Now, it's now to the council, and if we want to place it anywhere we want, we could, but we don't. We want to go to the recommendation of the, of the Parks and Trails, without a doubt. I mean, they're made up of a, a great group of people. Uh, there was a lot of thought put into, uh, uh, their discussion. And so their recommendation is to, uh, go forward with that, uh, park bench and give, uh, Sue Nelson and Thad Hope the, uh, jurisdiction to place it where would be the most appropriate. And, uh, if we, if you need a, uh, a motion from me to do that, I would certainly, uh, entertain that from anyone.
Now, my impression, Doug, was you should have handled the whole thing in the beginning. It was a bench in a park. You guys handle it. It shouldn't have even shown up as a arts and culture thing, because it's just a plain old bench.
I agree, I agree, Steve.
Yeah, the, the bad thing about that, and I get it, but the bad thing about it is that all of a sudden somebody calls me and I don't know nothing about a bench, and, you know, I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about, so. I'm not, was that, um, but we'll have to make the motion for tonight, if you could, flirt with the motion tonight, because we are kicking everything to the evening session when we're making decisions.
Exactly, okay, thanks, Rick.
Yeah, no problem. As I say, I just wonder why they were both up, there, there was no need for both to come up on this one.
Well, except for that is the policy that was adopted. Yeah, so, um, until that policy is amended, then that's the policy that we do follow. So, uh, the, the reason behind the, the offer of the donation is a very, very nice one. And Mr. Peterson is here at the meeting to talk about why they were interested in donating this bench and why in that specific location, um, and, and it's a, it's a very good reason.
Sure, let's hear it.
Um, Mr. Mayor and, um, members of the council, um, um, first off, um, I'm thank you very much for giving me the time to speak. My, um, mother-in-law, Nancy Stutzman, passed away on, um, July twenty-fifth. And, um, the, um, family and I, uh, felt that it was a, um, a wonderful memorial to put a park bench in, um, a dog park which is adjacent to where, um, Mrs. Stutzman lived, uh, because she received, um, so, um, so much joy from watching the dogs run and play, and also to, talking with the park visitors themselves.
Well, we appreciate that, and it sounds like she was a very, um, unique neighbor to have in that right little corner there, that, uh, dog park on McCormick Park, it's beautiful area.
It is, very beautiful.
And it'll be a, a, a great addition. I don't think I've heard anybody oppose, but we're going to push it till this evening is to, um, to make our decision, that's what we agreed on a couple of months ago, but, uh, hey, thank you very much.
Oh, you are, I'm, I'm very welcome. Um, Sue, should I make plans to attend, um, tonight's, um, session?
Um, I, I don't think that there's any reason unless you are interested in, in, um, monitoring it, but I, I think that it's pretty well-received by the council. I doubt that there will be any questions, but if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them at the evening.
I have one little question. It's like, this bench is a tribute to his mother-in-law, and I would hope that, that somewhere that gets captured, so people realize why it's there. I mean, he's doing, it's, this is something you do in memory of someone you care about, and I want to make sure that we honor her memory and place it.
Uh, if, um, if, um, you take a look at the, um, email that was included in the, um, agenda packet.
Yeah.
There is a, um, sample of, um, of, um, what the bench might look like. Not with the correct wording, of course, but, um, this is the bench that the, um, 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 family has, um, um, chosen.
Oh, that's beautiful. That's really wonderful. Thanks, that helps a lot.
Um, and this bench is made out of, um, re, uh, out of, um, recycled plastic. And the, um, and the, um, manufacturer of the bench, uh, warrants it for, um, um, fifty years.
Excellent.
Awesome, thank you so much.
And we'll most likely be, um, installing it on a concrete pad, so it'll be easy to maintain around it.
Yes, I am still, um, trying to get, um, a high, um, level bid from the, uh, uh, concrete vendor.
Yeah, I, I would not even worry about that. I think our Public Works Department will take care of that.
Oh.
Yeah, let's just plan on that.
Yep, I would say that too, and I don't see anybody contesting this. We just are pushing everything to the evening, Stuart. Because we want to give public input a chance to, when we discuss these things through the day, to be able to either watch it or hear about it and be able to respond before we vote on anything, and that's what.
So, so Stuart, I want to thank you so much for, for, uh, your fine presentation to the Parks and Trails Commission and the follow-up to this, uh, as well. It's the way things should go, and I appreciate your, uh, your follow-through very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, just, um, one more point, I, um, approached Thad with, uh, two, um, proposed locations. proposed locations. He and I walked the park and came up with a third that I think is the best choice. Closer to the entrance or the parking lot end of the park.
Nice. Well, I sure wish all processes went as nice as this has. And thank you for being a part of that, Stuart.
You're very, you are very welcome. I'm thank you for the kind words.
Yes. Okay, Stuart, we appreciate you showing up today and
Mayor Counselor Locke has has his hands raised.
Oh, Counselor Locke.
Just comment this to me to Sue to look up. Seems like when we made those rules, didn't we come up with a standard bench for the city?
There was not a standardized bench. It did say that benches would be made of wood unless otherwise approved by the the city or the commissions that it was presented to. Because we've had a lot of metal benches presented from, they're mostly the art type benches that have been approved by the Arts and Cultural Commission. So not, and then of course, wood typically is a little bit higher maintenance. But that there wasn't a particular style that was associated with that policy.
Hey Stuart, this also allows us to to watch and see how easy it is to maintain. And maybe that'll be the future of the City of St. Helens is is the plastic benches. I mean, 50 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very happy that it would outlive me.
Stuart, when the ordinance was made, was there even plastic benches available to think about?
When that policy was made, I'm not sure if there were benches that was made, that were made out of that material. But it was certainly in the days of Trex and the other types of composite materials that are low maintenance. But I don't know if that had was really mainstream into this type of furniture or not at that time.
So the rules really just overlook possible materials?
Yeah, that's why it gave the option of, you know, other things as approved by the various commissions.
I recall that discussion and part, somebody made the point that materials would change and that that the benches are always benches. But they've, the styles change as time changes. And that's was was part of the I know that that was part of the discussion and the city wanted to maintain a flexibility in what they could do in certain parks and in certain settings.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Stuart.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good day, sir.
You too.
Okay. All right. So now we're going to talk about, this sounds fun, Employee Wellness Committee Proposed Bicycle Giveaway Volunteer Program. Jenny and Shawna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So Shawna and I are here on behalf of the St. Helens Wellness Committee to talk about the bicycle giveaway volunteer program. And first, in case you're like, what the heck is the Wellness Committee? We formed five years ago by a resolution of this body. And since then, our small group has met periodically to discuss ways to promote worksite wellness for St. Helens City staff. With a small grant and a budget, we've held educational classes at lunch. We've hosted walking challenges and we've delivered fresh produce baskets to different departments. So at our last Wellness Committee meeting, Shawna came to the group with the idea to create a volunteer program where city employees could volunteer a certain number of hours per year at an approved organization while on the clock. And her first idea was called the Bike Giveaway Volunteer Program. And I'll pass it to her to talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. So the bike volunteer program was based out of a need that has arisen with the Police Department of having a surplus of bikes at their location. I used to be on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission as the Secretary. And they used to take those bikes and fix them up and then hand them out to the public or have a surplus sell. Because that commission's no longer, it hasn't been done for quite some time. So what I had done is the Police Department had surplus approximately 25 bikes. And I now have them in my possession over here at the rec center. And our goal was is that we would be able to fix up these bikes and be able to get them in conditions where we can then give them out to the public for free. We also have bike helmets that we have available to us. And we thought this would be a really good partnership with city employees as well as the community to just have a total wraparound program to get these bikes out into our community. So our ask is, and we also presented this over to the Bikes and, or I'm sorry, the Parks and Trails Commission. And we're able to get $500 approved for supplies to get them up and going. And as well as some volunteer time for some of the members on the commission who are more experts at repairing bikes than Jenny or I are. We wanted to create some sort of program where city staff could volunteer up to two hours a month to help repair these bikes to get them ready and available for the public. The benefits to this program would be a collaboration between the city departments, boards and commissions. And, you know, my ultimate goal is to get something going for future volunteer opportunities as well. We thought this would be a great place to start so that we have a very structured program. So it's not just volunteering for whatever you feel like doing. It's something that benefits our community as well.
Yeah, and and we think this would be a good trial run to try out a citywide volunteer program. It would just be targeted towards surplus bikes at first, but eventually maybe we can develop rules around a citywide volunteer program where, you know, you can volunteer at Habitat for Humanity or something like that with your department or just other ways to engage the community. But right now, we're just focused on the surplus bikes.
The managers have brought it up in their meetings and I think that it went well. And and I've worked for other organizations where volunteer time has been part of your paid hours. And it just brought a lot of morale in the employee workplace and also some benefits to being out in the public and engaging in those ways.
One of the things I'm wondering, the Police Department has a group of bikes always coming in. And after a certain amount of time, they're surplus. A lot of them are operational. Now, it's going to take some tools to fix up some of these bikes. I'd like the program that also would help the kids or whoever is going to get these bikes be part of the fix up program. Kind of really expand just the staff having time to fix them up, but also involve the community who is going to receive them. And also a group of these bikes could go on the trails or wherever as rentable or usable equipment on our park system. Could that be fit into this program?
I appreciate those suggestions. And I think those are definitely things that we could look towards if we decide to continue this. At this particular program, we wanted to be a pilot program to see how this even worked out and what kind of capacity we had. But my overall goal is to get some sort of programming going where the community can come and repair bikes or kids can. Right now with COVID, we're a little bit more limited with that. So we thought this first batch would be a good way to see even how this would work and what sort of resources we would need.
As I remember around Christmas, there were a whole group of folks that put bikes together to give away. I think we can find people in the community to fix bikes.
Yeah, Hudson came here and ended their bike giveaway that they do. So I've been researching a lot of different cities to see how they handle their bike programs. And there's a lot of really cool ideas out there. And even Paul Barlow had brought up a few at the meeting that we went to with the Parks and Trails Commission about having some sort of ongoing program and how he could support with that. So we we are for sure interested in continuing it. We just thought this would be a good pilot run to see, see what this even looks like.
I think it's a great idea. You have the recommendation from the Parks and Trails, who is actually going to fund you. Collaborating with Wellness, which is a small group of you in the city. And getting volunteer, volunteer base for future projects as well. Yeah, win, win, win.
And we're making the PD happy. Don't forget them.
Do we need that as a recommendation tonight as well?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, good work.
Great.
Both of you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Hall request office updates, John and Matt.
I'll take the lead on that. If that's, Matt could probably finish it up. But I just wanted to take, this is something that kind of kicked off with the hiring of a Public Works Director and that'll come later in my report. This set off a chain of questioning of where people are going to sit and perhaps an opportunity to rearrange people around City Hall that they can work more efficiently and effectively together. So there's currently not an open office upstairs or even downstairs for an additional employee. And we're looking at some changes within the existing footprint here to make some improvements, create some daylight, create spaces where people can work together that that work together typically. And Matt has details on, you know, construction costs, working with staff. Is this the internal Public Works led proposal? No, let you take the rest of it, Matt.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to share my screen here. And let me know if you, you should be able to see this. This is a floor plan of the upstairs room. These are the stairs as you come up, the two doors that go to the engineering and planning. And then the other door that goes to my office right here and everybody else. So a few of the changes I just wanted to highlight is one thing with, especially with COVID going on, we are we would like to remove the doors that are in the hallway to reduce touch surfaces. We would also like to, I'm going to move over just a little bit here. If you're familiar with City Hall, which all of you should be, you go down a little hallway across from Carol's office, there is a little kind of a break area right here. And then there are two office spaces right here currently Darren, our IT person, as well as Rachel has her office when she is here at City Hall right here. We, one of the biggest changes in upstairs is creating two offices right here in which Jenny and Jacob, both from planning departments, would be together. As opposed to currently, right now, they're on opposite sides of the building. So there's a lot of walking back and forth for them. So we'd like to put them together a little bit in this office space. So we are proposing to build kind of a longer office for Jacob as well as an office here for Jenny. Those are probably the biggest changes upstairs of adding workspace. I'm going to transition over here. The little break room area, I should mention here, this wall right here in the middle of City Hall appears to be a load bearing wall. So we originally had talked about knocking this wall completely out to really open up the upstairs. But it just is not feasible and costs, it's going to cost a lot more to put in a beam and all the, all the stuff that has to go in with that. So what we've decided is we'd like to open it up just a little bit here. Roger said that he can easily add a beam just in this area to help with that support. So it'll be a little bit more open. Also, the sink and break area that is currently right here, we're just going to kind of flip that 45 degrees so that we can put it against the wall here. 90 degrees?
90 degrees.
90 degrees, sorry. This is why I'm not an engineer. So over here, there is an open space here with just a small little divided wall. And this was where the rare person used to be when the city had a couple of those in its history. We would like to make this into an actual office area. And that's where we're proposing Rachel would go when she gets back into the office. You'll also notice here, if you remember, when you come in upstairs, there's a little kind of open area, atrium area right over here. What we would like to propose is putting in some desk space, workstations area that for people that come in as internships or summer labor, summer employees that come in for engineering or public works and just need a little workstation. We also have auditors that come in every year that always need a workspace. So we're adding a couple little workspaces here in this little unused area right here. We're also proposing just some changes to the counter to make it feel a little bit more open. And we're going to add some additional storage for engineering because they have to keep pretty much everything that is created out of that department. So creating some more storage capacity for the engineering department. I'm going to switch gears here and scroll up. This memo is in your packets. These are rough estimation costs right now for what we were planning on doing. The basic construction costs are pretty minimal because we're, you know, just putting up a couple of walls. We're not tearing down a huge area or anything like that. We would like to bring in Peak Electric to come in and do some new wiring with the new offices in there. And this is also an opportunity, since they will be adding additional outlets and redoing lights and everything with this proposed plan. We'd like to go in and since they're already up and taking, putting stuff in, we'd like them to take out all the old stuff that sometimes we do, we have had issues in the past with some of the electrical work here. Wayne Martin Flooring, we've talked about coming in and doing some flooring. We have a few different options there depending on what we want to do as far as carpet, carpet squares or LVP or so there's some price differences there that we can get into later, once we actually get going on the project to make a decision. There also is some plumbing work with moving the sink over. We've also talked about adding a water bottle, water, water bottle filling station like water bottle filling station. Similar to what we have downstairs, it's pretty readily used by employees that just have water bottle on their, on their desk to fill up throughout the day. So that would be handy for having upstairs. And then I have a little bit of a contingency cost in here just because this is a really old building. And we have often come in and found stuff that was not anticipated. So so we have a rough estimate of about $25,000 that this remodel would cost. As John mentioned, this kind of helps alleviate some of the workspace issues that we have when adding a potential new Public Works Director or anybody else that has to come in and do some work. So John and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have. If you, if you have any.
One thing, I think you better get a structural engineer in there and a historic person. I don't know how much of this will be affected because it's a historic building. But because it's kind of a strange building, I'd sure as heck want to get a structural engineer in there. And I think if you have a chance, rip out all the old wiring and rewire the whole thing.
So we are, we plan on rewiring the upstairs. As far as a structural engineer, you know, we've had Roger and Sue. And Roger is going to also walk through the idea with Mike, our building official, to ensure that we meet all the building codes. As far as it being a historic building, we are not adjusting or changing anything from the outside. So the look of the building from the outside does not change, which according to our city planner means that we don't have to go to the Historic Commission or the Planning Commission for any approval for this work that is inside the building.
I'd still get a structural engineer because that building has got some weird habits.
There are, there are definitely some weird habits. And I will honestly say it depends on how much money City Council wants to spend because we could spend 500 grand redoing the flooring and redoing everything that needs to be done. That's definitely not what we're asking and definitely not a project that we would like to do right now.
Because you also don't want your roof laying on your desk because something wasn't in the right place.
That's, it's I understand that. We're actually adding more walls than taking out. So we should be adding more support in general sense. But but happy to answer any other questions. And if a structural engineer is needed, I'm sure our building official or Public Works Department would definitely bring somebody in if it's needed.
Well, it looks like you're creating another office space. So good job.
Okay, that will be on the agenda approval for tonight as well.
Okay, Strategic Action Plan update.
So that is myself. I just have three small updates for City Council on tonight's agenda. On the consent agenda for approval, you have three updates to job descriptions. Since the administrative billing specialist, library assistant, and the public works office assistants. This goes back to one of our strategic plans as far as putting the job description language of commission support into the job descriptions. This in the past has been something that has just kind of been assigned and kind of an unwritten, so to speak, rule of some employees that help out with some of the commissions. So we are actually adding it into the job descriptions of those employees that take part as supporting some of those commissions. So that is on the approval for tonight's agenda as well as the second item, which is a additional services agreement from McKenzie Engineering for Police Needs Assessment. We are continuing to work on the police needs assessment and the police study. We've had several meetings internally with McKenzie as well as gone out to and done some additional tours. We've talked to some potential polling people about going out in the community and talking and getting some ideas from them. And there's some, just some additional work that we feel that we need to do to accomplish the police needs assessment and to get kind of a full floor, floor plan of what is actually needed, how it's going to look and everything that goes into getting a cost estimate. And then working on the financial capabilities of what that police station is going to be. So the additional services agreement is to help with all of that and kind of get us to the finish line.
So the ad hoc committee, Matt, how does somebody get on there?
Well, so Rachel Berry has been working diligently, I think with Kathy as well to finish up the application process. We just finalized some of the language as far as putting a one-page kind of summary sheet of what the ad hoc committee is, what their roles are, what their responsibilities are. And so that will go with the application that should be released here to the public, I would say this week or next week at the very latest. And then all the applications will be given some time to come in. They will all come to the city council for approval onto the ad hoc committee. So you will get to see everybody that applied. We do have a kind of a laundry list of people that we feel would be great. So we will, staff will reach out to those people individually that we kind of identified that we think should be interested. But it's always open to community members and there's plenty of at-large members on the ad hoc committee for those that want to be part of that process.
Nice, good.
So the only other thing on the strategic plan update is in all of your boxes a little while ago, you got a list of properties that the city of St. Helens owns as well as a list and description from, that was done by Jacob and Sue and planning and engineering. And I wanted to touch base with the city council to see if you wanted to set up a future agenda item to discuss any of those properties. Or if you just wanted to kind of leave it at that, you have a list of the properties and it can be brought up whenever you feel is necessary.
I think we should definitely review and discuss some of those, my opinion.
Exactly. I, I, I think that's, that's a necessity so that we know what we have in, in, in our city inventory. I think that's essential. So at some time we should set aside a half hour or so to discuss those, those properties and what their potential is.
So I'll, I'll leave that up to the mayor to decide what's agenda and what, what meeting you want to put that on for Rick. And you can either chat with Kathy and decide, I'll put it in Kathy's ear to ask you whether for September, October or something and you can make that decision.
Yeah, the only, only reason I wouldn't have it on there for the council to know is if we had other stuff loaded up so much. Okay.
It's, it's good, it's good to know that that isn't a time sensitive issue, right?
Yes. But definitely something we need to look at, especially with the developmental side of things on, on property, just to, just to speak about and ideas.
So that is all I had for strategic plan updates.
All right, Matt, thank you. Now let's get a city administrator report, John Walsh.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The, actually the first thing on the administrative report is the Zoom meeting policy and guidelines. We had an incident with the planning commission last week where they got Zoom bombed or there was a, somebody that jumped in and kind of inspired this notion for having a policy related to how we conduct these types of Zoom meetings. Matt had prepared this report and before I, I'm going to defer that one to Matt before I go into my, my report.
Yeah, it just kind of happens to, you know, we don't have a policy until something bad happens. And then when it does, then we have to go back and create all these policies and directions and instructions for staff that are doing meetings. So one thing with the Zoom meetings is you'll notice at the top is requiring all boards and commissions to hold Zoom meetings unless otherwise approved by the city council to hold in-person meetings. Then we get into kind of the setup and requirements. You'll notice not on this meeting, but on the next and future meetings, you will need a passcode. That will be given to you as well as it will go on the meeting notice that goes out to the public as well. But that's going to be a requirement of Zoom coming up very soon here. As well as you'll notice some differences in this meeting as well, you'll notice that only the video screens that are allowed are the council members and the staff that are currently present, John and myself. When people come up on the agenda, then I will allow them and ask them to start their video. And then when they're done, I turn them off. So it's a lot more management at the meeting, so to speak. But definitely it's a lot more secure in how we're doing it so that the city doesn't have to deal with a potential issue in the near future. So this goes through mainly all the setup guidelines and requirements for those Zoom meetings. And this would go to staff that oversee those commission members to institute all these rules and guidelines for when they set up Zoom meetings.
Absolutely. I mean, there's got to be a still order in a, in a meeting. So that's what we're protecting is order in a meeting.
One of the questions I have, Matt, maybe you can answer this, but through Comcast, we had issue, we've always had issues with, with our channel 29 and Comcast with sound and with other issues as well. But going through Facebook, I believe, is that's the method? Okay, so
Yeah, right.
Facebook is there, isn't there feedback that we will get of how many individuals in our community are tuned in to what we're doing and is
We get absolutely, you know, kind of instant results as far as knowing who's on there as well as being able to go back and seeing what the reach was of how many people potentially watched it. And Crystal's probably the best at giving that information and I'm sure she can probably update you on any of those stats at one of her future communication meetings. As far as channel 29, it continues to be kind of a big issue with sound qualities, even with what we've done with the council chambers thus far. I would just point you more towards the survey results that we found that there was not a lot of people that really watched or even knew of channel 29. So I don't know how many, how much time or resources you really want to spend on fixing something that I don't necessarily would see needs to be fixed. And I would encourage people to stream online through Facebook or watch it later on YouTube. Those are usually the best avenues and most people are more familiar with that now because meeting requirements are are now forced, people are forcing people to be on Zoom. So people are being forced to learn new technology and new avenues. And so I would kind of just push them in that direction rather than towards channel 29.
Okay. Great thinking, Matt. Okay, John Walsh, go ahead and continue.
Okay. So there's a couple of things off the agenda I wanted to pull out and talk about for tonight's decisions. What is the first is on number one on the salmon berry timber sale to Olympic Forest Products. We've received a, you know, $624 per thousand board foot price for that timber. It's about a 60 acre track up on the salmon berry property, which is a, you know, it's a really good price. It's not as good as, you know, it's not the top of the market, but it's about $70 more than the last time that we sold timber. So it's, it's pretty good. But that's 60 acres is a number that's part of a sustainability effort. The city has about 2,400 acres in its inventory effort at Salmonberry and a, a long time decades ago, the city really aggressively cut in there, but much more than 60 acres per year. And so where we've been on a path here to get back to this every other year harvest of about 60 acres or so that will, will get us onto a, a long-term sustainable yield revenue stream for the city rather than, you know, you know, cut, they get out, cut and get out, you know, it'll be out of there for a number of years at a time. And sometimes it makes sense to go ahead and cut a little bit further ahead when the market's high or there's a cash, cash issue or something else we want to buy with the revenues, but the council, we had talked about last time about other areas to potentially harvest. And there is, is other areas, but if we, you know, right now we're cutting our 20, 2021 timber. If we do anything else, it'd be the 22, 23 timber. You know, as it's maturing and, and you know, there was an investment that, that we wanted to use those funds for to be good, but we wouldn't do another cut probably for five years. The story, then we other looked at some down at the mill site and things that there's some timber there that wouldn't necessarily qualify for a sale of this type. It's, you know, more of a spot, more of a logging operation type thing where they come in and just, you know, then, then some of the thicker trees down there. So, you know, that, that's always an option. Like I said, markets, you know, it's, you know, very good. It kind of defies all the logic around COVID and how we you know, hard times, but if you look at like Home Depot stock, I think is up 30% the last six months or something like that.
This is a really touchy subject and I want council to think about it just because, I mean, there is no guarantees. It's like the stock market. We're getting $70 more a thousand square foot board, which I don't know how much a tree has in it. Is it about a thousand? I'm not sure. Anybody got an answer to that question? Cause I'm not a logger.
How big the tree is.
Yeah, well, well, the, the size we should know because of the sustainability, we should have a pretty good idea if we, if we were in that industry of what it would about average.
Yeah, I talked at length earlier with our forester, forester Brent Keller. He would have joined us. We wanted him today and he can in the future if you want to talk more about it, but I, I felt like for purposes of this sale and accepting the sale that we're probably in a good place.
Well, they certainly aren't what they used to be. I can tell you that, that they would, you know, just in the, in the past, they're starting to cut timber that is, what is somewhere in a area of 40 to 50 years old, third, in, in there and back when I was working in the woods in the summertime, it was hundred-year-old trees and 120-year-old trees that were huge and thousands of board feet in one of those, in one of those trees. So I'm not certain what, I'm not certain what the, with the board footage on each of those trees that are yielding are ready to yield. I have no idea.
And I think it's measured in acres now as far as board feet per acre averaging and some of the modeling that they do.
So but we could go ahead and accept the price later on our agenda on this one cut. And if we decided we wanted to talk further about it, we could have Brett show up at our next meeting, right?
We do, and I have him tentatively setting up what a next cut might look like.
Uh huh.
Council look at. So he's already working on that because at some point we're going to need to do it and we are going to do it. So it's not work that won't be wasted.
But, but it's $70 more than our last cut two years ago, right?
Correct.
Per thousand square foot.
Yeah, trees are cut. Most of the industries changed now to small logs. It's a log or your big log.
Right.
Okay, as they get bigger, they actually, you know, there's less mills that handle them. So sometimes it's almost a penalty to take your 35 to 40, 45-year-old timber is kind of the sweet spot right now. So the, the other item on the agenda I want to talk about was the agreement with the mall foster along G for the Sykes Road reservoir feasibility. And this is, this is a, a project that has a couple of components. Primarily it's a, well, first of all, that I wanted to make mention that mall foster is our, we have an all called services agreement with mall foster for, for doing, you know, these types of services, engineering services and environmental. So, so this, this contract isn't, you know, which is much like the grading project. I actually went out for bids on the grading project just to kind of check and see where they're at. And they came in under the other bid by quite a, quite a bit. This, you know, this is a, you know, primarily finding a site to build a drinking water reservoir. Sue tells me about five million gallons in, in capacity up in the mid to high zone. So the, what I've asked them to do is develop a proposal here that adjusts, addresses it in two phases. And the first phase is to address the general suitability of the, the, the site itself. As far as, you know, environmental, geotechnical, you know, things of that nature. And then when, if the site appears to be suitable and then the city would move forward with acquisition of that site potentially, then we would move into the, the further diligence on that in the second phase. The, you know, the ancillary piece of the benefit with this piece of property that it is 160 acres and it has about a million and a half dollars with the timber standing on it right now. That would be of value immediately and it'd also be valuable in the long range with the city and its inventory of timber, timberlands. So but for today's purposes, the action item is to accept the, the agreement with mall foster along G, it's like for road reservoir feasibility study.
Okay.
And this phase is there. Questions with that? I'm not, there's actually a few other things here, but the, you need to hop off pretty soon, Mayor.
Uh, here, I got a little bit. Got that appointment at 3:20.
Okay.
With the doctor.
Okay.
So if I drop off Morton, you know where I'm at, okay?
Uh, you're at the docks. I, I know. I'm not telling you which ones.
That's great. So the, the CARES Act funding has been, there's just been a lot of work here earlier from CSAT and others today about how much, you know, money is coming in and going out sideways and who's making applications and you know, pushing this money through and, you know, the, the 1.8 billion at the state level that's come down and then some of that's been trickled out to cities, some of it not as much as we had hoped. But the money that we've distributed is, is all out to our community partners. We've been addressing and supporting those checks are, are cut and, cut and out there. And we're still pursuing other things. And there's a latest one they put out was for funding for cultural events and, and city and community events and to backfill some of the losses related to COVID. And it's about 300 and some thousand dollars to the county coming up through the cultural trust. And we are intending to put in for that to recoup some of the costs from 13 nights and, and potentially some of the Halloween things that aren't, aren't going to be happening with this scaled down effort that we're doing. But it'll be competitive. I'm sure the county fairgrounds, you know, didn't happen at all. So they, they have a big loss there and and, you know, the other cities in the county will be, be doing that. That's due Monday. Everything's short notice. And so it's always a fire drill lately, it seems like.
Monday?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've got a draft we're working on. So there's been some talk about, you know, some criticism of 13 nights that you heard today, a concern about safety of Halloween town. And we're, that's something that we're taking casually and we're really trying to design a, well, I think it's, it's a recent story in the news about Sturgis where the city manager had his hands up and he is going, I can't stop them from coming. And, you know, they literally had 250,000 people come and just, we're just trying to manage, manage it. There was really, really difficult. And, you know, Halloween's not what Sturgis is yet, but there is a lot of people that come here every year for Halloween and that you're, you feel that the best way to manage that is to, is to manage it rather than just put up the props and let them come at the, as they will. So, you know, Tina Curry with her events has done, has, has a pretty, pretty good plan. It's highly sensitive to, you know, the cleaning, the safety, the, all the protocols that are in place by the governor. But, you know, still, you know, it'd be worse if we didn't manage it, I guess is kind of the message. One other thing that Tina's been working on is this kite club that she has some kites that she's been trying to have things for people to do. They're outdoor and distance down, out on the mill property here on the vineyard property and and what she's proposing is we have somebody that wants to donate a mini Connex, like a six by eight Connex box and put it down there. It's locking and it's all steel and have kites inside of it and have somebody that can be there to let people out and use kites on the, on the vineyard property during the day and put them back. So I guess an ask to the council is they, this web person, Chris R. Sith, who's actually ran the Halloween haunted house over there has and wants to just donate this Connex to the city. I don't think it, I hope doesn't have to go to the typically I think just get donated through to tourism. We don't go through a donation. It's a movable kind of thing. So we can, we didn't want it, we could get rid of it, but but put it down on the vineyard property, you can, in a nice spot that's kind of hidden and out of But put it down on the veneer property, you can, in a nice spot that's kind of hidden and out of the way, maybe right behind Salisbury Spencer. That somebody could have a shed there to come grab a kite and fly it and enjoy the day. Anybody have any concern?
Oh, I do. I do on the Halloween town. I just want to assure the public that if, uh, it looks like it's gonna be a threat to our public safety that we will pull a plug. That we do ultimately control that as a council. And we will be watching it. Uh, I'd like to have a little bit better layout of how it's gonna go. Especially with the, um, public comment and the one email that I have received, uh. Um, so I've had two people total, which is. Um, but I just would like to have a little bit more of depth.
Sure, I can. I can, um, there is a site plan. Um, I can share that. There's no traffic flow. There's a vendor's location. It's designed to. You know, create those distancing and spacing and there's somebody doing clean restrooms by the hour. Controlled entrances, exits. And a lot more.
But we're gonna get a lot of, we'll get a lot of, what I'm saying is if it looks like it's gonna be touch and go, I mean, are we prepared to pull the trigger and, and. Just shut it down. I mean, that's what I need to know. That's not, not what's the safety plan.
Mayor, I was, Mayor, I was gonna weigh in on this on my report briefly, but. I've had, uh, seven people, uh, talk about Halloween town to me individually. And, uh, each of them was very negative. I mean, it was like, uh, how can we, how can you do this? Why is the city doing this? Whatever. So, uh, the more information that we can put out about what the city is doing, uh, the. You know, the better off we're going to be. And, uh, I wouldn't know how to go about cancelling. Uh, all activities because people are going to be coming here no matter, kind of no matter what. Then what do we do with? Or what does the police department or, or people, individuals do with them? But, uh, we've got to start putting out the word here pretty darn quick. Uh, uh, so people know and, uh, don't hit the panic button. Okay, that's the most, that's the most inquiries I've had about any issue within such a short time.
Yeah, and you'll, you'll see that, that things like the Festival of the Perrys isn't happening. You're not having kids roll around in balls and. You know, you know, high-touch things and things of that nature. It's mostly hands-off, observational kinds of things. So. Things that you get up and sit on are gonna be there.
But is there gonna be big draws is what I.
There's not, there's no talent. There's no big talent. There's some small street vendor, you know, type things. But they're pretty spread out and. Where he's got kind of guys.
Yeah, like, uh, because I haven't been, you know, updated on that. And I know I could be. Um, but I, I just most recently got this inquiry this last year.
And we can do a full report at the next meeting or whatever, whichever you like. Or, yeah, maybe even tonight if you wanted to.
Yeah, maybe, uh, yeah, see if you can get us something tonight. Yes, yep. I think, uh, the sooner the better.
Okay. So on other matters, the, uh, we're continuing on the waterfront funding with securing the interim waterfront funding for the state. Public Works Special Opportunity Fund that is, we're working with the state people to. You know what I'm talking about is the veneer property and, and two projects. One of them is the. Construction of the roadway and utilities from one end of the site and the other project and. And there's lots of projects within that project, but the other one is the, uh, the Riverwalk and the. Park improvements including the stage. And we have set this up. On a path or on upon plan is we either get, get the build grant for the eight-point-six-million-dollar build grant or we don't get the. Point-six-million-dollar grant. So there's two, two proposals that are gonna be simultaneous. And the way this funding, these applications are gonna run together. And then, you know, if we, and I'm really encouraging that we'll be successful and we'll have. About a fifteen-million-dollar project with the grant. And if we don't, it'll be, uh, about a thirteen, thirteen-million-dollar grant. And, uh, and what that looks like is, it's a little detailed as, as far as projects. And local matches and percentages of contingency and, you know, some things not happening and on the same path. There's this, but, but. Generally, we're gonna, we're trying to secure around ten million dollars, um, of funding. And that's, uh, that's a super high overview. It's really complicated in, in the detail, but, um. Happy to go deeper on that. And, you know, the, the ten million dollars is really a number that, that's what the state offers. At a really low interest rate, they defer payments for three years. Upon, on completion. And then on the other side of that, how do we pay it back? We're looking at all the stuff we've been doing with our urban renewal. Plan and update and we've got a pretty. Low to medium assumption on the growth with urban real agencies capacity to be able to repay that, that amount. So. Lastly, and well, I'm not sure, firstly, but Public Works Director Recruitment, I want to talk about that briefly. I think there. At least I feel like there's perhaps some confusion on the issue. Our candidate, William Daniel, he opted to withdraw from the, the, accepting the position. And that last we talked, I. Thought I heard that if, um, if that happened, which we thought there was a possibility of that. That we would pursue the, the other candidate that we didn't get a chance to interview. And. Looking for direction from the council on that. So, you know, I did contact, uh, the candidate. He remains interested. Happy to come out sometime soon.
Want to hear from us, counsel.
Well, I certainly, I certainly think, uh. You know, that, 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 that the interviews concluded. They, they, they're, they're. I saw them as being finished. Cause they all, uh, we could string this out for a long time. Uh, and, uh, what's to say if he can't make it on some, on certain dates that we propose again? And then does this mean bringing the entire staff together again and go following through the same interview process? That, uh, we went through, uh, the first time. So it'd be exactly the same. Uh, and the only thing different then would be the time increment between when we interviewed. Uh, the other three candidates and when we interview this one. I think that that, I think the, the validity of that interview then, uh, doesn't fall to pieces, but I don't think it's really valid. It's, uh, we interviewed three people on this, at a specific time. They all, uh. Were, were very, uh, cordial about showing up on time and being there. And, uh, you know, they all had options to, uh. Every one of those people had options to not show up. And, uh, and interview later and. I, 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 I don't get it. This is the first time I've ever seen anything like this with an interview process. So. I have problems with it. I have problems with bringing this, uh, person to back out to interview him who. Uh, uh, who, who missed the interview process. The first two, in the, the first and second place, uh, finishers were extremely close. I mean, very close. And I see no reason why we can't just tap into the, uh, second place person. And go with it and have, and be done with it. Uh, my, my, when I saw that. My reaction was, when are we ever going to get done with this interview process? What else can go wrong? Uh, I, I, I don't know. I have no idea, but I certainly didn't expect. This, that we would fly a person from back east here to interview him specially because. He missed the, the initial interview. I, I, I don't get it. Anyway. Uh, uh, that, that's my, that's my, my kind of feed in. And I've been on quite a few. Interview boards in my life. And I've never seen anything like this. I certainly have never seen anything like this in the city. And, uh, uh, I, I don't know. I don't know if we're vulnerable with this one or not. I don't think we're, I, I don't fear that, but, uh, I just think it's a invalid process.
One, one problem though is if you drop off and say, oh, we'll take the next guy because the first guy didn't show up. Oh, we'll take the third guy because the second guy didn't show up. You're setting a precedent. You almost have to restart the whole system.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought, I thought.
And which means we could have other people sign into this also. But, uh, the fact that the person didn't just because he had a bad day, what didn't show up. He had a real family problem with the. His wife in the hospital. So, you know, it also shows here, the old St. Helens doesn't have any heart. You can play it any way you want, but there's some things we better not do on this one.
Hey, Jenny?
So past practices, we have used the, our second candidate before in the past. And then if that doesn't pan out, then we go out for new applications. So that's my recommendation is we, we take the second recruit. He doesn't pan out, then we go out for new recommendations then.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm really fifty-fifty either way as far as number two, but I, kind of my understanding in the room. Was that if we didn't get a candidate that we would start over. That was my feeling, but you know, sometimes, you know, ten people could be in the room. Everybody can hear it differently. You know, I, I want to do what's best for our community. And like, you know, Counsel Morton said, the, the candidates were all very well qualified and very scored very closely. But it's like, you know, this, because of COVID, this is even more complicated because the application was how many months ago? And we're that much further down the road. So it's like, how much longer do we want to string it out? I definitely get that element. So I guess I'm saying I don't have strong feelings either way.
Well, we waited a number of years to get to this point before we even put out an RFP. So, you know, time, we can argue about it, but it's not really meaningful. Not meaningful.
So if you want me to weigh in, I will. Um, I think, uh, personally that, um. We had some good qualified candidates. I would like to, I personally, me, I think I would like to see an RFP. All over again and start the whole process completely over, um, just because of the way it fell. I mean. Uh, and we can do that. We are allowed to do that. Uh, it was a long distance between the interview and the initial applications. We had sixteen, I think, to review from. Um, you know, wheels aren't falling off, so to speak. It has been this way for quite some time. I've heard that comment for a lot of people. I've also heard the comment about waiting. We've been waiting for a long time for this too. You know, the council voted on one person and that person refused the job. I would like to re-interview qualified candidates.
Okay, so right, if, if we go with that. Right here and now so that we don't have to go through a third time because I don't know how many interviews. That I've been through where that first person does not want the job. Quite a few. And in it with the city here as well. So, uh, we have to come up with some kind of concrete thing. If we do this again. How we're going to choose and, uh, what the, what, what the ramifications are if the, if the winner. Of the, uh, of the interview, uh, uh, comes out here, takes a look and refuses. And then what do we do? Do we start all over again and do the same, the same procedure that we're doing now? Or do we pick the second person? How, what's your thoughts? Because I, if.
Oh, my, my thoughts, if you really want to know my thought process, uh, I'll be very blunt and honest is that if we offered it to number two. That, that was not my first choice. That was not what I envisioned to bring to the city of St. Helens.
I see.
Yes. And that's all I need to say. I'm not gonna get into anything else because I think that could be held liable, but that's not the vision I, I seem to say.
Yeah, they were two very different candidates, very qualified, but very different candidates. And I just, I think that if we go into this and, and you know, to Counsel Morton or to President Morton's. Point, maybe if we choose them A, B, as opposed to one, two, three. It's either A or B and then that way you're not just ticking down the list. You know, if there is two, but maybe there is only one that's the best qualified, just like we had in this scoring process.
And that, that was the motivation between, for my asking the question that the last, you know. If that, if that happens and it did, and where do we go?
What I would like to also do is be able to deliberate that same day after the interview process with legal counsel there as well. You know, I'd like to just do a deliberation in exact session and get down and browse stats. I think that we can do that.
One process.
Yep.
So are we staying with the same process and involving staffs?
City council job, we can't give our work up to other people. We got it. We're stuck with this one.
If I can chime in, if, if the city, and I'm very blunt, I'll be honest, okay? But if the city council does not, is not gonna take staff's opinion into anything. Then I don't know that we need to be involved in the interview process because we just took up time.
No, you're right. You, that's, that's good. I'm glad that you spoke up now. I mean, you're right. So that is a decision that we need to, um, let's kick it to this evening and talk about it. I still haven't got my phone call. I don't know what's up with the doctors. I had a phone call doctor appointment at three twenty. And, uh, apparently they're running late.
Surprise.
Matt, what I would suggest is the candidates get introduced to the staff. And that's it. There's no interview but introduction for courtesy.
Well, and one thing you could do, I've seen it done in, in other cities and other places is you may have a. An interview with the council and then maybe there's a little reception with all the candidates and staff can meet. All the candidates and whoever's interested in wanting to meet them, they can come by the reception. Now, that's a little bit difficult with COVID and everything, but. Um, you know, we could do, figure out something like that if staff was, if you're open to that.
Yeah, fair enough.
So I think, um. We'll bring it up tonight because we're gonna make a decision on the, it sounds like potentially. Hey Kaiser Permanente, John, uh, Counsel Morton, I'm gonna turn it over to you. But we'll put it on for tonight to talk about putting out the RFP, okay?
Okay. Add it.
Hello.
Okay, John, are you concluded?
I just maybe wrapping it up there real quickly here. Um, in the Sand Island camping, they're just doing great over there. They've just booked every weekend. It seems to be a huge success and. You know, good, real community asset, I think, or, you know, taking a chance on that. At this point, it looks really to be a good thing. Uh, they're working, there was a small picnic shelter over there that they're working with the Columbia River Yachting Association to rebuild it. But it's gonna be a lot bigger of a steadily, rather than that, I don't know, I think it was twelve by twenty. I think it's gonna be twenty-four by thirty-six and. It should be real, you know, we, we haven't seen the permits, we have some review process with the council on our role as, uh. The landlord and the leaseholder without those improvements, but I just wanted to let you know that's coming. And, uh. Got an email today from Art, Art Leszczewicz. If you haven't read that in your email box, he is expressing some concerns with the Wilsonville. Concrete Products Lease and I wanted to talk about it, um, workshop and/or the night meeting. And his concerns are about the, uh, environmental concerns with the sediment underneath the lease area and. I'm familiar with the reports that, that he included in his email there. Uh, I can. Talk to DSL and DQ and kind of get an understanding and response back to that. So. But, uh, yeah, that concludes my report.
I've got one thing to bring up. Uh, back in January, we had a discussion about. Uh, putting an RFP out for a tourism director and we, uh, the council agreed that we put the RFP out in July. Obviously, July's been a mess. I'd like to put that RFP out that we agreed on in January, uh, in the next meeting or so. We put that on the agenda. We put that on the agenda.
You know, I, I kind of think that it, it might be too soon to put it on the agenda for, for tonight, but we can look at it in the future, certainly.
Yeah, as I say, we, July, as we know, was scattered across the fence. But we had decided that in January, so just get it on the agenda. It's not infinitely required, obviously.
So you're talking the, the document itself or the, just the direction to staff to prepare it?
The, the process, whatever that takes.
Okay, alright.
The discussion.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, uh, let's go on to other business, Public Works Department report.
Um, that is actually just a physical report for you. Um, as you notice, the agenda looks a little bit different because this is our first meeting under our new software. So Kathy has put that under, it's not technically a discussion item, but it is all the public works reports that are normally in, included in your council reports.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the packet and not meant to be a discussion item.
So what, it, it looks like, is there any other kind of issues, uh, uh, following the agenda that we have? Anyone have anything? Okay, with that, then we will reset, oh, John.
I just gotta add, the executive session, that's conclusion of the meeting is that I place holder. Uh, if there was something that came up as far as real property or to consult the legal counsel, we do have legal counsel on the line. I didn't have anything specific tonight. If, just to let you know, during the meeting, we're not gonna go into executive session unless you, as counsel, feel like you need to have an executive session.
Uh, comments about executive session from anyone?
We're good.
We're good.
We're good? Okay.
Three executive sessions.
It's, it sounds like, it sounds like we're good. Keith, you, I didn't hear from you?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so with that, we'll adjourn this meeting and we'll reconvene then tonight at seven o'clock on, on Zoom. And, uh, we'll see you then. With that, we'll adjourn.
See you tonight.
Wait. There you go.